I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 18, 2018 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Mrs. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday. Sunday. Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got a special presentation tonight. I'd like to invite Tom James. Want to come up? Tom is golf course maintenance director for a short more period. Has been with us for 33 years and some extra time beyond that. But I just want to congratulate him on 33 years. Excellent service, anybody that knows him. I don't think anybody's got a bad word to say about him over that 33 years. He's seen the city's golf course grow. He joined us, I think, in 1993, and Tara would have been a nine-hole course at that point in time. And of course, now we've got two 18-hole championship golf courses. And so he's managed that whole time. They flourished, and I think they are recognized as some of the top public courses. I actually think some of them will compete against private courses as well. So, Tom, you've done an excellent job. He's got a really high ethic and a work standard with the staff. And he demands a lot, but he's a good friend to him as well. Couple of GWIS facts, about 210 acres are managed under him. If you figure 260 days of mowing season, that's about 8,840 days that have been mowed. Probably about 154,000 pin cup changes during that time. But I think the biggest thing, if you hear people that have worked with him, worked for him, that he's just a good friend. He's been a mentor to a lot of people. And I think there's some people that even say he's been a dad to him. He's got that much of an influence. So, Tom, just want to thank you very much. And those that aren't familiar with the butterfly, little story behind it. Well, first of all, it just says it's a butterfly. "Tom James presented this day for providing the Papillion golfing community superior playing conditions and unwavering service for 33 years." People aren't familiar with this. It's actually a patented butterfly by one of the engineering firms. They've used it around the city, and it was patented. And then they had them made, and the foundry only made so many. And I think the mold's actually broken, if I understand right. So it is a very limited number, so we don't give very many of them out. So just want to give it to you and say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have you shared some words?
Well, I'd like to thank all of the mayors, city councils, administrators, administrations, all the rest of the city people. You know, they've helped golf and myself through the years, trying to keep me straight. Most generally, everybody did a good job at that. You know, Tony started back in '93, '94 for us. Chief's son Max has worked for us for a couple of years. Jeff, you know, we call it public works, and not that we ever need a backhoe, but Jeff has always, and public works in general, have always loaned us operators and backhoes and whatnot. You know, I got my guys back here. Ryan, he started, he's really worked for us most of his adult life. You know, he started as a seasonal laborer way back when. How old are you now?
(laughing).
It's 34.
Started when he was 16.
Started when he was 16. Casey and Adam are the present assistants. They're going to have a hard decision to make here coming up pretty soon, what's going to happen. But we appreciate all the guys that have ever worked for us, too. And then the golfing public. You know, without the golfing public, we might still have golf, but it wouldn't be what it is today. And I just appreciate all the support that everybody's always shown. And thank you for allowing me to work at the golf courses for so long. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Myers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to thank Tom for his 33 years of dedicated service to Papillion. Thank you, Tom, and best wishes for a great retirement. You're a great employee and a better friend. Thank you. Also, council members, you should have gotten a notice from, an invitation from Kendra regarding a Facebook tour scheduled for Friday, January 4, at 2:30. If you haven't already responded, please do so. We are limited to 10 individuals, so if we receive more than that, I'll work to schedule a second tour. But if you could please let us know. Also, I wanted to congratulate Jeff Thompson and his team. They'll be recognized at the Nebraska Concrete Paving Association's annual luncheon for the work on the Lincoln Street paving project. So congratulations. Also, I talked about a water and sewer rate analysis a couple of months ago. We're in the process of working with our consultant on those details. And I would expect the initial results from that study to be available and ready to share with the Finance and Administration Committee probably early in March. Lastly, I'm going to be out of the office over the holidays, but I'm available by phone or email. Amber will be here, so if you need something, please feel free to reach out to her, but don't hesitate to contact me as well. And by saying Merry Christmas, and I'll see you next year.
Thank you very much. Next is the consent agenda. Do we have motion to approve? Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any propon- oh, Mr. Ingberg.
I'd like to poll C4, please.
C4 is polled. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Please vote on everything except C4. Motion passes. Next is item C4, Resolution R180209. A resolution to approve Players Keno's Inc.'s request to exercise its option for the second renewal period pursuant to the third modification of the Lottery Operator Agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180209? Motion by Mr. Ingberg, second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I wanted this polled was simply because this association and agreement with Players Keno has been so successful since the beginning. Those of you who were here at the time recall that previous operators did not do a particularly good job, and we went out for bid. I'll go through that whole process, but they successfully bid to take over our Keno. And since this is a renewal again, that's part of our current agreement, I just wanted to point out how valuable it's been, the relationship to the city, and was hoping that the Assistant Administrator Amber Powers could maybe speak to the growth and the numbers, whatever she might have available, just for the information for the public and the council.
Ms. Powers.
Thank you. You're correct, Steve, or Councilmember Ingberg. The first few years, there were some challenges with the growth and some milestones in the contract that they had to overcome. But in recent years, overall, the last three years, it was a 7.3 percent average increase on the gross proceeds. And the city's net, just for 2018, the city's net was over $400,000 after the taxes were taken out. And we're projecting, hopefully, the $400,000 for the three years for the terms of this extension.
And we should probably, we should probably point out, too, that money that you mentioned that comes to the city goes to our capital improvement fund, which goes to better the community. So for the first time in a long time, we have a healthy amount in that fund to do projects that otherwise might not be done.
In the Community Betterment Fund, exactly. Thank you. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote. Motion passes. Next is item E1, Ordinance 1826, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R2 Single Family Residential Medium Density. For the property legally described as attractive land located in part of the northeast quarter of Section 29, along with that part of the northwest quarter of Section 28, and All About Lot A, Granite Lake, a subdivision located in said Section 28. All located in Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the southeast corner of South 114th Street and Cornhusker Road. The applicant is Stone Creek Plaza LLC, Granite Falls North, Phases 3 through 5. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10-909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100 in Omaha, here on behalf of the applicant. This will coincide with our final plat. That's up next for a public hearing, which is our third, fourth, and fifth phases. So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Next is item F1, Resolution R180202. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in part of the northeast quarter of Section 29, along with part of the northwest quarter of Section 28, and All About Lot A, Granite Lake, a subdivision located in said Section 28. All located in Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6PM. Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the southeast corner of South 114th Street and Cornhusker Road. The applicant is Stone Creek Plaza LLC, Granite Falls North, Phases 3 through 5. I'll open the public hearing. I'll carry the previous comments over as well. Unless, if you've got some new ones, you're welcome. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have motion to approve Resolution R180202? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilwoman Klug. Any council discussion? Please vote.
8A's, 0As.
Motion passes. Item F2, Ordinance 1825, an ordinance to amend Chapter 92 of the Papillion Municipal Code to adopt the National Electric Code 2017 Edition. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1825? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Do want to note, and Sean, thank you for reaching out to the building community. We've, they went on public, at the public hearing, they submitted a letter that they were in favor of this. So thank you for reaching out to them on that. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
8A's, 0As.
Motion passes. Item F3, Resolution R180205. A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as part of the north half of the southeast quarter, the south half of the northeast quarter of Section 24. Township 14 North Range 12 East in that part of the southwest quarter of Section 19. Township 14 North Range 12 East in all that part of the southwest quarter of Section 19. Township 14 North Range 13 East. All the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located east of South 66th Street and Centennial Road. The applicant is MBR Development LLC, Pioneer View Phase 2. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180205? Motion by Councilwoman Klug?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? If you'd state your name for the record.
Good evening. Ken Pollard with Lampar Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road, here on behalf of the applicant, MBR Development. So this is the second and final phase of Pioneer View. It'll add 102 additional lots. Couple of unique things that'll come out of this project. We'll be able to add the third lane on 66th Street, which will be nice, to have a good, solid three lanes all the way through there, north of Cornhusker. It relocates the Northern Natural Gas Pipeline through that project as necessary to make the project work. And then makes all the final trail connections. So we'll have trail connections from Settlers Creek to Eagle View to Eagle Crest, and then north to Stockman's Hollow. So we're excited to get going on it and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
8A's, 0As.
Motion passes. Item F4, Resolution R180206. A resolution to approve the First Amendment to the Pioneer View subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180206?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
8A's, 0As.
Motion passes. Item F5, Resolution R180208. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a special use permit to allow childcare center as a permitted use on the property legally described as lots 19 and 20. Sarpy 84 Commercial Park, generally located at 1214 North Monroe Street. The applicant is Lisa Feick, 1214 North Monroe Street. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Proponents, and if you'd state your name for the record.
Lisa Feick, owner and director of ABC and Me Childcare Preschool, located in La Vista, currently right off 84th Street.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Anybody neutral? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R180208? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Gaines. Any council discussion? Please vote.
8A's, 0As.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F6, Resolution R180214. A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in part of the southeast quarter of Section 24. Township 14 North Range 11 East of the 6PM. Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the northwest corner of South 132nd Street and Cornhusker Road. The applicant is Triberto LLC, IAD Logistics Hub. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180214? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilwoman Klug. Do we have any proponents?
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, here on behalf of the developer. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
8A's, 0As.
Motion passes. Related item, F7, Resolution R180215. A resolution to approve the IAD Logistics Hub subdivision agreement. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R180215?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents? Can I note the applicant is still here? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Jason, you came all the way down here for multiple projects, so I'm going to give you an opportunity to tell us what's going on over there.
On IAD Logistics?
Yeah.
All right.
I'd be happy to. I thought it was going to be easy money tonight. Nope. (laughing).
Well... So before you is our final plat for what we're calling IAD Logistics Hub. The preliminary plat has been before you, and the special use permit will be coming for a couple of these lots. But this is roughly 160 acres at 132nd and Cornhusker here. And this is really a logistics hub, is exactly that, by the developer. Creating large parcels in our community for, you know, the Amazons and the Googles of the world that don't end up in Council gloves or outside and here in Papillion. So that additional ground, it's really difficult to find large pieces of parcels in the Great Oklahoma era for anything of substantial size on the logistics sides of things. So a couple images we've presented, and we'll come back with a special use permit of, you know, how large these buildings can get and some of the looks of them. And it's really creating the opportunity for that next large user, you know, that needs a transportation hub. It's located well, off I-80. A lot of, a couple of good access points, even though it's on Cornhusker and off, but you can get to 80 fairly quickly in a couple of different areas. And there'll be some public improvements that come along with this project as well. So UPS, FedEx, like I said, you know, I suppose it could be a data center location. I doubt that, considering there's already locations on 144th Street for that. But those kinds of users is what this project is geared toward. So be happy to answer more questions.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
8A's, 0As.
Motion passes. Next is item F8, Resolution R180216. A resolution to approve 2019 trash hauling applications. If there's no objection, I'm going to have them all in one motion. If somebody objects to that, we can pull them out separately. But if there is no objection, a resolution to approve 2019 trash hauling applications. A for Abe's Trash Service, B for Gretna Sanitation, C for Premier Waste Solutions, D for Waste Connections of Nebraska Doing Businesses Papillion Sanitation, E for Waste Management of Nebraska, and F Waste Services of Nebraska. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180216 with all of the applicants? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilwoman Klug. Are all the applicants here? Just raise your hand if you are. Looks like most of them are here. Do we have any proponents other than the applicants? Unless you want to come up and speak, but you don't have to. Any opponents? Anybody neutral? Any council discussion? Please vote.
8A's, 0As.
Motion passes. Thank you all. Next is item F9, Resolution R180217. A resolution to approve the appointment of Amber Powers as Deputy City Clerk. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180217? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents? Any opponents other than Ms. Powers? Any council discussion? Please vote.
8A's, 0As.
Motion passes. Thank you all. Next is item F9, Resolution R180217. A resolution to approve the appointment of Amber Powers as Deputy City Clerk. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180217? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents? Any opponents other than Ms. Powers? Any council discussion? Please vote.
8A's, 0As.
Motion approved. Thank you for volunteering. It's all the regular agenda items, and I don't believe any committees have met. Last meeting, we did make committee assignments, but there's no committees scheduled. Next is comments from the floor. I believe we've got a student or a scout with us. If there's any students with us or scouts visiting, you want to come up to the podium and introduce yourself and maybe share why you're here. And we wait. (laughing). It's at the end of the semester. We have a whole room full.
I'm Colin Nash, and I'm from Troop 888. And I'm here to complete a few of my merit badges, since some of the requirements include attending a public meeting and taking notes.
Thank you very much. If you have any other requirements on that badge, Ms. Klug and I'd be happy to stay afterwards as well, if you have any other questions. I don't think we have any other students, do we? Any other comments from the floor? Any council comments? Oh, yes. Come up to the podium. And if you'd state your name for the record.
My name's Nicholas TVBaw. Just a resident here in Papillion. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. It's been a while since I've been in front of all these people. So I guess I just came to voice my concern over the implementation of the new 5G technology I hear that's being rolled out around the United States, around Nebraska, and around the city. I don't know how far it's gotten here. I haven't seen any small cell deployments in neighborhoods or anything so far. But I don't know how many people here in the audience or up here are aware of the studies around the health effects of 5G. And so recently, the FCC has been, begun installing 5G towers and small cells around the country. The chairman talked about the creation of the Internet of Things. And it's basically a new system that's going to connect a bunch of different items, not only phones, but like smaller devices all around the home that people aren't really aware of right now. The technology is still developing. And they're going to chip way more devices than already have been, and it's all going to be uploaded into the cloud. And this requires a large infrastructure change and a total saturation of towers and small cells around the country. And the frequencies used on these cells are, I think they're millimeter waves, or they're higher frequency waves, so they require a lot more energy. And these also emit EMFs, electromagnetic frequencies which emit radiation. And as some people already know, the phones and technology that we use, like all the technology that we use so far, emits some level. And for the most part, it's harmless in small doses. But since they're going to have to deploy these small cells around schools, churches, all over every community and in between houses, it's concerning a lot of people. And I haven't really seen anything about it here on YouTube or videos, but I've been looking at other council meetings around the country and seen some in Michigan. There have been many testimonies about it. And some of the concerns with this technology are, they have studies locate, studies that have shown links to brain tumors, miscarriages, DNA replication interference, which is a component of cancer. It, I think it's involved in the creation of cancers, cancerous cells. And there's another journal, I'm not a journalist, but there's a journalist online. His name's Derek Bros, and he has also talked about this to the Houston City Council about the same issue. And there have been several doctors that have also warned about this technology in Michigan. Like I've already stated, they brought it up at their city council meetings. And with all these small cells and towers, devices will become, there will be an extremely, there will be an increased exposure to EMFs and radiation. And I don't know how aware the public is of these cells and the health concerns, because it also harms children at a larger rate, because they will have a longer time being exposed to it than adults have already. And since they're a lot smaller, just like they did the studies with rats and saw that they had tumors, children are much smaller, so they can absorb way more. And I guess some of my questions are, is everybody like aware of this? Has anything been done to, has there been a debate about it here at all? I, you know, I just, I've just started hearing about this in the past couple of weeks and months, and I've just been kind of learning about it, so I'm a little bit slow trying to explain it. But I, yeah, I just wanted to know if you guys know anything about that at all.
Little bit for education, especially with like the scouts that's learning about public meetings. We've got to be very careful during this portion of the meeting, because we can generally only discuss things that are actually published on the agenda. And this is not a published item, so we can't have an active dialogue. We can take comments, but one of the things I do is I make comments as part of the meeting, so I'll make some comments about 5G. The, we're very involved in 5G. It's a statewide issue, and the legislature's actually been working for about two years on it. That's, and Papillion has probably been a leader, working at the legislative level, trying to, tried to get the right regulations in place. Our city attorney is probably representing most of the municipalities in the state on the topic. So what I would offer up is, after the meeting, at least make contact, so we got your name. We can share a little bit more of what we're doing. But I'd really encourage you to start watching what's going on with the legislature. It's going to get really active this session. And we are very, from a city perspective, I would say we're worried about giving up local control. That FCC ruling you mentioned actually strips away all of our local control, and we have, they just get implemented, and we have no rights at all. And that's the battle we're having at the legislative level, is to try to get that control back, so we can handle it through planning and zoning and have right regulations around it. So you're not off base. If you hang around after the meeting, we'll have, we'll talk a little bit more.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Any other comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Thank you for everybody that attended the comprehensive plan and design sessions. And I know there's still opportunities for feedback. Really want to make sure we're getting council feedback. So if you had, if you didn't participate in those, reach out to Mr. Sturzma to make sure you can still get your input in there and see what was discussed at those meetings. Tended, been pretty active with the schools, have met with some house students, some third grade students. We had some Derek graduations last couple of days. Ms. Myers and I attended a United Cities meeting, met with the new state senators, and introduced them to the things we're concerned about, and 5G was on that list of items we talked about. We, Ms. Myers and myself also met with the Facebook's Community Development Manager. Facebook really wants to be involved in the community, and they've got somebody dedicated to this area about community involvement. So we had a really good meeting. to the, to this area about community involvement, so we had a really good meeting with them. The tour is one of the things coming out of that to get oriented. We also had a meeting with the local representatives for Shadow Lake that'll be marketing that, they've got some really active plans for leasing activity. They indicated that they have some leases pending that will be announced soon, and they're getting re-engaged into the community. Tony, just again, a big thank you for everything you do with the foundation, Downtown Lights. I don't know how many times this year I've heard the word, it looks like a Hallmark story. So thank you very much for what you do there. Any other council comments? We have one other thing. Ms. Hanson is going to, oh, one other thing, the next city council meeting does get moved because of New Year's, so we will meet on Wednesday, January 2nd. But we had three open house events at Papillion Landing for the community to see the facility, and there were cards that were put into the basket, and we're going to draw one of those names tonight, and the winner gets a free Papillion Landing membership. So who is going to draw?
You guys are going to do it.
Courtney Case.
Courtney Case.
So Courtney gets a free membership to Papillion Landing. Thank you, Lori, for everything your team has done.
Thank you.
With that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilwoman Klug?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
8A's, 0As.
We are adjourned.